So.
Yeah.
I've.
And they're. You. The. They. People.
Really?
Yeah. Because.
You know.
This. That. It's. Then. It's. That's. We could. That's. Pretty. No. It's. We. Oh. Thank you. So I. Um. Yeah. Oh, good. This. From. It was kind of. I wasn't expecting. I think. He's. Like. He's. I didn't. I'm sure. Who? Okay. Yeah.
Okay. Excuse me. Call to order the September meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Uh, roll call.
Uh, yes, sir. Berg is absent. Koleski.
Here.
Chokovitz.
Yes.
Beely.
Here.
Strayer.
Yes.
Berthold.
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right, we're all set. Next item on the agenda. Excuse me. Approval of minutes from our August meeting. We had a copy in our packet.
Uh.
Before.
We have a motion and support for minutes as written, all in favor, I.
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 Opposed. Minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda for thirteen oh one South Main Street temporary use. We have somebody to speak on that?
Yep.
Okay, come up, please, just give us your name and give us a little overview what you're hoping to do here.
All right, yep, my name's Joe Lewis. I started Amazing Buds several years back, so I manage it. We're looking to have some, uh, basically like a get together. We're thinking once weekly where we provide a food truck for patrons. Anybody that comes and makes a purchase will have dinner for free. So with that, we would also have cornhole out there, just two boards. We'll have a speaker so that we can have some, you know, some, some sort of music, nothing crazy. It's not going to be a concert or anything like that. Um, pretty, pretty simple thing. It'd be like a three hour event, once weekly, give customers free food, make sure they feel appreciated. And, uh, just that, you know, we want to, we want to be part of the community and see this as a way to, to help out.
Mr. Lewis, this is in your parking lot?
Correct.
Okay, exactly where I wasn't sure if that was your building or.
Yep, that's my building, so it would be, uh, it would be right up against the road. If you, I think you can see the sign on that map. It would be directly underneath our sign.
And you're looking at Saturdays in September?
Send it here, Mike, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You have people.
Yep. My bad.
I would like to do it past September. Um.
I'm just asking because that's what it says here. It also says eleven to seven.
We, I'm, I'm open. I, so I kind of like left a broad thing and I didn't know exactly how specific I should be, but, uh.
Specific, what are you really asking for?
We would like to do twelve to four is what we're looking for.
Oh, okay. Noon to four.
Noon to four.
And because, because we'll approve it for a specific time and dates.
Okay.
If you want to do it through October, you should ask for October.
We definitely, we would like to do it through the rest of the year i- is our hope. And, uh, twelve to four is completely fine with us.
Noon to four, but then beginning on the first Saturday in September.
If, I mean, uh, I guess it'd be the, the second or the third.
Too late for that, isn't it?
Right, right. Yeah, as soon as possible.
Twenty-third. September twenty-third through you tell us.
If we can go the rest of the year, that'd be great.
Okay. I would imagine that weather will preclude some of that come December or so.
It may, I mean, my thought was, you know, we have to have our parking lot snowplowed anyway. It has to be accessible.
Okay.
Um, so, you know, I don't expect it to be as much of a turnout in the colder months, but I would imagine as people are leaving the store after making a purchase, if they can get free tacos or something like that, that they would stop at the food truck and they may, you know, get some free food.
Just for sure for me. So food trucks are allowed the corn? Are you wanting to do the cornhole the whole time?
If, if possible, I would like to just to, just to offer.
That request would go to them. Corn, the food trucks is a separate matter through the clerk.
Okay.
Um, so I, I know this is August, but they asked for September when, when I discussed this with them, it was, I think they only thought they could do a month, but um, you can authorize them up to a year and then after a year they can do the five years. You guys, you, you all know this.
Yeah.
Um, so you, you can authorize them up to a year if they want to do it in the cold. It's up to that.
I, I would suggest we, we set it to like December, Saturday, December twenty-third.
Okay. And then after that, I just reapply essentially.
To be clear, though, what Jeremy is saying is food trucks, you just need to get it. They just need to get a permit
Mm-hmm.
and park in a legitimate place on your site that doesn't take up cus- you know, required parking at site. Uh, it's the other activities, the music, the cornhole that require the permit from the CBA. So if all you want to do is permit, you don't need to come here. You just get the food truck, get permit and they can show up whenever they want.
Okay.
But I also think from our discussions, you want to do it yourself, not a food truck.
We were up in the air. I, I was thinking we would do it ourselves and then we had, uh, the day that I came down, I spoke, I, I believe it's Robin and.
So, so my suggestion would be if, if you do do through December, then he'll have to come back into January, you know, or maybe not January, but if he does good, we'll have to come back in January to reapply. So we could potentially, you, you could as a board do a year.
We, we don't want to go out. We don't want to go out too long. Uh, first of all.
But I'll see.
You go see how it works, but also come next year, we hope to address some of these things in the new zoning ordinance so that if they don't need a temporary use permit.
Deadline for this.
Correct.
Why don't we say September twenty-third through December twenty-third?
That works for me.
Okay.
Alrighty.
Talk again when we see how it's going.
Sounds great. All right. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it. All set? Oh, shoot, I'm sorry.
We just, we just needed to establish what it is.
Guidelines.
We're doing.
Okay, okay.
We have a few things we have to go through.
Alrighty.
Are there any other questions, first of all, from anybody?
No, but I just would like to say make sure if you do do a food truck that they
Of course.
get the proper permits.
Of course.
Okay. Uh, we have some items we have to go through for, uh, approval of this. One, the temporary use permit is compatible with various provisions of this chapter. Uh, says project appear to be compatible and, uh, find yes for that. Number two, temporary use is reasonable use of land, compatible with general plan, land use designation and zoning classification. Uh, proposal seen apply with all this commercial area, so not an issue there. Number three, temporary, the temporary use will not impede the reasonable use of land or the early development of land in the immediate vicinity. Uh, proposed temporary use contained in the property therefore will not impede anyone unless you end up with crowds and crowds of, uh, people. So it's going to be on your property should not be a problem. Number four, temporary use shall not adversely affect the adjacent users, uh, buildings or other structures. Same thing, this is, uh, on your property, so I imagine if all the people park where they're supposed to, it won't be any problem with your neighbor.
Correct.
Number five, temporary use will not endanger the public health, safety or general welfare. Uh, don't see any issue with that. Number six, provisions for adequate traffic access, circulation, off-street parking, pedestrian safety have been provided and will be maintained during the operation or use of the, uh, activity. Uh, is there any way that anything can be separated from where people are driving in and all these things are going on or?
Nope, we, we have one single entrance.
Okay. The tents and stuff will be back as best they can, so not to interfere with any of that.
Definitely.
Okay. Find yes for number six. Number seven, that grain of the temporary use permit is made subject to those conditions necessary to preserve the general welfare, not the individual welfare of any particular applicant. Uh, nothing there applies, so find yes for number seven. Uh, we have anybody online? I see we have somebody, is there anyone online to speak to this? That's, okay. Hey, uh, hearing none, uh, commissioners, we've found an affirmative. I'll entertain a motion.
I would move approval of the, uh, application for a temporary use as presented with the times being eleven AM to four PM.
Well.
On noon to four, excuse me, noon to four and dates being September twenty-third through December twenty-third of twenty twenty-three.
We have a motion. We have support.
Support.
Any questions on the motion? Roll call vote?
Yep. Berthold?
Yes.
Chokovitz?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Strayer?
Yes.
Koleski?
Yes.
Motion passing absolutely.
You're all set?
All right. Thank you for your time.
In, just in addition to what Jeremy, Jeremiah said about relative to food truck.
Mm-hmm.
If you're just going to grill hot dogs, you may want to check with the county health department first.
Right, yeah, that's kind of why we started thinking about that and leaning towards just getting a food truck. Just, thank you for that.
We've got nothing to do with that, but just.
No, I appreciate all the advice I can get.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. You guys have a good night. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is, uh, for twelve oh three Wolf Creek Highway dimensional variance. We have someone to speak on that? This person coming in for that or not?
I don't know.
It's the guy online.
Oh, it's the guy online.
We have someone online or? Jerry, are you able to hear us online? Do we know if we're all connected?
He's right there. No?
Well.
Put the headphones on, make sure you.
We'll take a slight delay here.
Can you unmute? Can you unmute him?
There, does it work now?
Yes.
There we go. All right, thank you. I'm sorry.
No problem. Would you, uh, just give us a quick overview of what you're asking for here, please?
Yes, sir. I'm Jerry Flynn. I met with you a year ago. Um, I guess I didn't realize that my variance expired, but it, but I didn't go on with it. I now have a buyer for the, for the lot there. They would like to establish a car lot back in that location, so I am back asking for the dimensional variance.
Uh, this is the same variance that was requested and approved, uh, before, correct?
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, questions?
Not a question, uh, you know, since we did approve this, when was it? July of?
June.
June of?
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty-two, oh, okay, a year and a few months ago.
Yeah.
Uh, and if nothing else, for the sake of consistency, uh, I would suggest it would behoove us to, again, grant approval of this. And, um, perhaps since we already reviewed all this for goal, they're finding a fact in this particular matter and if that is.
Refer to the previous finding of facts?
Refer to the previous finding of facts and if that's acceptable, I would move for approval.
Project, one, see if we have any questions from anybody, anybody else, nobody else is online, right? Nobody in the audience to speak on this? Why, quiet group out here?
Yeah.
You don't want to say anything?
I could say so.
Gordon says I'm always glad.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt that. We have a, we have a motion. Do we have support?
Support.
Any question on the motion?
I, I would move to I'd move to support, but my concern is the same concern I shared the last time. That intersection is extremely busy and any more barriers to seeing people primarily on Wolf Creek coming on to two twenty-three. Uh, my fear is it will create more accidents.
Is there some type of restriction on a lot like that as how close cars can be parked to an intersection to a corner so that there, there is visibility?
Uh, there is a clear vision area on any corner, essentially twenty-five feet along the right of way lines. Uh, so nothing can be in that, that area that uh, is uh, below eight feet in height and above a certain number of inches, so a car could not be parked in that triangle.
So who's responsible for this fall on? Is it, uh, is this something we deal with now or is that whoever purchased it, they have, we police them to make sure they follow what they're supposed to?
Well, I end up having to police it, but, uh, if you wanted to clarify that in your approval, that would probably be helpful, uh, you know, noting, not that you this, well, the, noting that it's subject to maintaining the clear vision area at the intersection of the streets.
Being a car lot, it also be, will also be subject to a zoning exception permit. And no, it's not. I thought it was.
I don't have the ordinance in front of me, but.
In re- in response to that, it is, uh, I think it's asphalt right up to the curb of the, of the road. Uh, cars are gonna, in order to display cars for a used car lot, they're going to be right up to the road. There's not enough room there to go back twenty-five feet. I, I'm, I, I'm, I'm not voicing that I won't vote for it. I'm just saying it's going to cause more accidents. Now you're going to have cars parked right up against the road and your, uh, your sight lines are going to get blurred, especially if you're going west on two twenty-three as the cars are coming from the north on Wolf Creek Highway. Thank you.
The, uh, the staff resol- the resolution provided by staff suggests that a zoning exception permit is required.
You are correct. Sorry about that.
So we'll have a chance to review a site plan.
Exactly. Yep.
Before and then goes in there?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So right now we're looking at just the variance. We're not looking at any site.
Right.
Plan. Okay. We do have a motion and we have support. Any further questions on the motion for the variance for the property?
Uh, I, I would clarify the motion is to adopt the resolution as provided by staff and also note, uh, that it will be required that the applicant or the, uh, the business owner apply for a zoning exception permit for a used car on lot on this ground.
Okay. Any other que- questions or clarification? Hearing none, roll call vote?
Chokovitz?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Strayer?
Yes.
Koleski?
Yes.
Berthold?
Yes.
Motion passing absolutely.
So the variance and then well, the new property owner will just have to do what they have to do.
A, apply for a zoning exception.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, Jerry?
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any old business, any other business come before us? Anything from the public? You're all anxious to say something. I know you are. Hearing none, uh, we'll adjourn the meeting.
Planning commission will convene at seven o'clock. So this Jeremiah gets us started there? Jeremiah, you're gonna join us over here or not? Oh, okay. Okay. Folks, we will call to order the September twelfth meeting of the Adrian City Planning Commission. First item on our agenda is a roll call.
Can do it.
You do that for us?
Sir, uh, Jakobitz?
Here.
Love?
Present.
Weatherby?
Present.
Johnson?
Here.
Watson?
Here.
Taylor?
Present.
Gauss? All members present.
Thank you, sir. My next item is consideration of the minutes from our July meeting, we didn't have an August meeting, um, commissioners, you have a copy of the July eleventh minutes. Um, and I believe you've had an opportunity to review there, are there, review those, are there any additions or corrections to the July minutes? Hearing none, we would entertain a motion for approval of those minutes.
Who approval has written?
Court? Is that Taylor and Gauss, Gauss, excuse me, Gordon, yes, okay, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any pos? Minutes are approved. Next item on our agenda is case twenty-three twenty-seven, an ordinance amendment relative to the, uh, I two industrial district relative to district fire distance requirements. And I'll ask Mr. Elliott to give us the, uh, a brief overview of, of what prompts this change.
Yeah, so, uh, Fire Chief and I, uh, had occasion to meet with, uh, Anderson Development about some potential, uh, expansion out there, uh, uh, on property they own or, or might acquire, and, and we found that, uh, the distance requirements in section twenty-one oh two five that in part relate to things which could pose a, a risk, but also, you know, and some of, some of them, I think, are more nuisance-based, like junkyards, but uh, particularly their operation, which deals with, uh, can deal with corrosives and acids and things like that. Um, it, it posed an impediment, and, and yet Fire Chief was of the opinion that those things anymore can be addressed through, uh, appropriate, uh, life safety measures in the building. And so he set about coming up with some language and reviewing, uh, uh, his code that, that would be appropriate to allow for a waiver when those standards are met. And that's the language that, uh, appears in red, uh, in your proposed text amendment there that you have in front of you. Uh, very short, I'll just read it, planning commission, upon recommendation of the Fire Chief, may waive or reduce the distance requirements set forth above if they are satisfied that adequate safeguards are in place to manage the risk. Proper safeguards will be determined by a review of an independent specialist designated by the Fire Chief in the specific area being reviewed and paid for by the requester of the review. Uh, so he's comfortable with, with that, uh, chief is online here, if you have any questions for him, but, uh, we're asking that you approve that, uh, to allow us greater flexibility and, uh, citing facilities like these, uh, in situations where there's not an actual risk, uh, uh, such that the distance requirements may not need to be met.
Any questions for Mr. Elliott or for Chief Massengill, who apparently has joined us online? Is there anyone either online or in the audience that wishes to address the planning commission on this proposed ordinance amendment?
Yes, I would.
Sir, if you'd step to the microphone and give us your name and tell us what you'd like to tell us.
Hi, my name is Chris Golo, and I am the Vice President of Quality and Responsible Care for Anderson Development. Thank you very much for taking the time to consider our proposed change to the ordinance. Anderson Development right now is, uh, considering potentially a new plant to build, and we're actually looking at a couple of different opportunities. And, uh, at least one of those opportunities, um, we wouldn't be able to consider putting an Adrian under the current, um, under the current ordinance. So, you know, we would prefer to build closer to our home area, which is Adrian. But we would really need to have that change made to allow that. And we've had a lot of discussions with, um, Greg and Chief Massengill about how can we both give the opportunity for Anderson to grow and expand and provide jobs and also mitigate risk to the community? And we believe this language would actually accomplish both. And, uh, one of the, one of the important factors of this is requiring the use of an independent, uh, resource to evaluate whether or not, you know, that change is adequate, and if we have to do anything greater than what we're doing now, as an example, um, we're looking at some handling of flammable, so we would bring a, a fire protection engineered, uh, that was specified by Chief Massengill, but Anderson would pay for it. And we would go by their recommendation to determine what would we need to do to make sure that the community is protected.
Understanding that the specialist may in fact say, yes, you need to maintain these distances.
They might, right, if that, well, if that's the case, then we might have to reconsider where we build. Although there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that you can do to mitigate fire risk, you know, one of the things that we use at Anderson is, um, A triple F fire protective foam, so the foam itself creates a blanket that rests on top of the, say, a solvent fire, and it actually prevents the oxygen from getting into contact with solvent, and it puts out the fire. So there's a lot of ways to mitigate risk of fire.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I don't see anybody else online or in the audience, uh, commissioners, any discussion? That, anyone else in the audience that I thought would want to comment on this particular matter?
It's qualified too.
Yeah. If there is no additional discussion, um, we would entertain a motion for adoption of the resolution that staff has provided.
Move to approve the resolution, support.
Love and Taylor? Commissioners, any additional discussion? Again, this resolution is, uh, the actual be in the form of a recommendation to the city commission, so. There's no additional discussion, Jeremiah, if we could have a roll call vote?
Gauss?
Yeah.
Watson?
Or.
Weatherby?
Support.
Love?
Yes.
Johnson?
Support.
Taylor?
Support.
Jakobitz?
Yes.
Motion passing absolutely.
Very well. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Is there any other business to come before us this evening? Is?
Understood, yes. If we were to build a site, it, it wouldn't be tomorrow.
Yeah.
We're still in the pre-planning phase, thank you.
Okay, very well.
We'd like to have you say.
Yes.
Yeah, so we are.
We would like to say in Adrian also, thank you. Um, currently, yeah, we have our, our site here. Um, at different points in time, we've had, uh, sites at other locations, including Gary, Indiana. But currently, our only site, uh, is here in Adrian. And, uh, we'd like, we'd like to expand.
Okay, excellent, hope that works.
Thank you.
Is there anyone at all that wishes to say anything to the planning commission? If not, we would entertain a motion to adjourn. Watson? Taylor, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you all very much.
Oh, yes.
I will be here next month.
Okay.
I will not either.
I'll be above the bridge.